He's like really good.
Yeah, he is. Except that his batting average just fell through the door, but.
Maybe that's from playing short or?
You know, the other thing that they started the season in, like, playing in Japan, you know, they went over there and played, I forget who they played.
Do we test it?
He lost twenty pounds.
Oh, you were somewhere.
You had the audio on.
So cotton just says cotton.
Yeah, it was feeding that.
Yeah. Okay.
So, hey, so.
People should be there, but I'll just turn all the audio. Audio. Here, here. There's a little green microphone.
Is it not coming through?
Yeah, it isn't coming through.
Well, I don't know if it's coming through there. But it should. It is. It is. Oh, okay.
I was gonna say, go see an eye doctor.
Here, you need these? I got a pair of readers, so you want to use them?
Oh, they're on his chest.
Okay, microphone, you.
Well, it looks like glasses.
I know you're. I know where you're messing around with it.
There was, yeah, we knew that.
After that.
Yep.
All right, good morning, everybody. It is, uh, it's nine AM. Today is Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty-five. We're going to call the. Cottonton County Commission to Order, and please rise to the flag of allegiance.
I'm giving the state someone that. And he's doing a lot of information scans. For my nation, I'm gonna have, and this is all, you know, for sure.
Reminder, I'm calling for a public comment. Public comment may be submitted online or in person by telephone, six oh five eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight two six two nine seven. Moving down to item number three, can I share any conflict of interest items?
No.
No.
None. Moving on to number four, action to approve the November fourth agenda. Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schwir. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item number five is action to approve the October twenty-eighth.
Motion approved.
Motion by McElhany, second by Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We do have Chris Clifton, the executive director of the Watertown Development Company, and Steve Lainer, who is the chair of the development company, on the agenda here. They are not present as of this time, but we'll come back to them if they do show up. Let's move on to item number seven. This is action allocate juvenile justice reinvestment initiative funds to the Watertown Boys and Girls Club. Is that you, Allison? Okay. Go ahead and turn your mic up.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, as we do every year, um, our juvenile diversion, our successful diversions, we receive grant money from the state. This year, we received two hundred and seventeen, two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Um, our juvenile diversion program is run through the Boys and Girls Club. It's Lewis Handfield and Miranda Wright. Um, and we typically reinvest those funds into the Boys and Girls Club to continue our return on investment. Um, we are asking to take those funds and do the same this year so we can continue sending it their way and hopefully um, rehabilitative services.
All, all the amount?
Yes.
Motion by Johnson and a second by Gable to do just that in the amount of two hundred and nineteen thousand?
Right.
Is it that? No, motion is second. Any discussion?
Just a, um, we have a situation saying, so, um, this, this comes from our, uh, when we set up the J D A I initiative and what you know, some of those, I mean, those are people working, and in cases working on you. And then it's also going to the, like, youth diversion program. Um, and initially, this was funded by a grant through the state, and now as that's gone away, this is a perfect way to cover those costs and do. Um, those, I want to say it's one and a half, two F T E, like, women research, right, that, uh, were paid for with that. And so it's, it's actually, yeah, it makes sense. Um, you know, it's, it's a, it's very purposeful, you search the funds there for that purpose, so.
Right, and just for some background, when we send kids through the juvenile, um, justice system, we really have three options. We can send them through diversion, which gives them the rehabilitative services, which kind of, um, I would say it's pretty intensive. We can send them through probation, um, but probation is not built for juvenile, or we can send them to DOC custody. And so, uh, keeping a lot of these lower level, lower risk juveniles in our community is important. Uh, and so we try to use our diversion program to get seven hundred and fifty dollars for a successful diversion case. Um, and Lewis and Miranda work very closely within our community to use community resources to provide those rehabilitative um, efforts for you too.
Yeah, no, what, just, uh, like, how far out do we go? The version, is it just the boys and girls from members?
Uh, no, no, if any kid that ends up with a juvenile that is subject to Cottonton County, uh, Juvenile Justice System can be eligible for that, regardless of whether or not they're a member.
Hey, just going to the basics and Allison, those two, to, you know, I, I don't think every single one, but the, but the J A I, so Lewis, anyways, the most.
Just administrative.
Yeah, well, they, they, yeah, they, they, and they're the caseworkers too.
Yeah.
So they, um, but they, uh, I'd say it pretty much touches the school system. That's a, that's a majority, you know, the bottom of the school system. But it's, boy, that's a, it's, it's rough times.
Right.
Supposed to, uh, the issue will come.
I will say that Cottonton County has one of these, uh, well-built diversion programs in the streets for youth offenders. Um, and I don't say that lightly, but the juvenile attorney in my office, uh, has got folks and they're very passionate about his work. He meets with Lewis at least once a week, say staff cases, and means our juvenile diversion program is extremely robust. Um, and so both, those funds get such a good use, but we're very thankful that we can.
When did we, when did we start that juvenile diversion program? How long has that been around? Lee, I think you and I were both on J D A I.
Yeah, so it started, the diversion program, the J D A I, so many AIs basically fits on a jail through, based on a risk assessment, but, um, but that was like seventeen.
Yeah, it's been around for a long time.
But, but we were one of the first companies to save the world, so.
Yeah, no, we're, we're very blessed and we're very happy to be able to, uh, contribute to that.
Uh, quick question. Now, this, this is something different than, um, we had Kerry Gasson here like three weeks ago.
Yes, different than that.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Okay, funds, I think is what I.
Just care of the question.
Question.
What, um, how, like, is there, like, a ballpark percentage of success? Like, you get a hundred kids, seventy of them successfully pass the diversion, or is that a part of the gauge or?
It's kind of part of the gauge. We have to submit those numbers to J D A I every, uh, you know, the end of August every year. Um, I have those numbers, I'll get them to you. Um, I just don't even recall them off the top of my head. I know I sent them to you, but I couldn't.
If this, if this, I want to say it's. It's, you know, it is decent, but, um, the, uh, Lewis probably gives a greeting once a year. Yeah, and so I'm just trying to remember what.
Yeah, maybe I'll try to get Lewis in here one of these days and give you a rundown, but, uh, I can imagine he's extremely busy at home.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. Thank you. Uh, let's move on to monthly reports. Four H Educator, that's Joey. Morning, Joey.
Morning.
Morning, Cody.
Morning, Joey. Why are you taking a forty? You ain't on any.
Yeah. We'll find it.
Which, by the way, I'd like to take just a moment to, to mention that I know Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Gable and I attended the four H recognition ceremony here a week or so ago, and what a fantastic event. And, uh, a lot of kids participate in four H, and it's very important to have that program around. And I just wanted to thank you and the staff and everybody that works with them on what they do. So it was a good, well-run event. I think it meant a lot to the kids.
Yeah. So, thank you for coming to. Our COVID buzz has begun, and that we started yesterday, and I have another group today and tomorrow. In, uh, two, two, two in Watertown and then one way really tomorrow, on Wednesday. And then I'll have four in Fall, so, but we have about fifty COVID buzz so far, and it keeps growing, so it's a lot of little five, six, and seven-year-olds, but quite a few new ones yesterday. Uh, members are still enrolling and re-enrolling in four H for the New Year, so they can still enroll yet. It just started October first. I have a team leader meeting that will be held this coming Sunday. And then shooting sports registration, I met with my shooting sports coaches. Um, we'll be opening soon for archery, BB gun, air pistol, air rifle. All the programs will begin in January of twenty-sixth, and then air rifle will be holding some December night practices, because they're competing for some other activities also. Um, four H will have a display at the Watertown Optimist Club Winter Wonderland, which is, we open Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays through December twenty-first, and then Cottonton four H will also have a tree on display at the Watertown Regional Library with the fundraiser through the Watertown Community Foundation. You sign up, you say you want to do it, but they have to do a drawing, and you don't always know if they're going to be part of it or not. But they should get to be part of it. So I'm gonna work with those junior leaders to help set that up. Um, each year we have to complete a county impact snapshot. So, um, I have not met with my supervisor yet, but this is what we have compiled and sent into, um, S D S U for our snapshots of Cottonton County four H. This is a short snapshot, doesn't include everything, but, um, it's kind of highlighting some of the programs that we have had, and you've probably heard about a lot of them, who we come into. This is your meeting, so. I can, um. All right, any questions? This is kind of a snapshot, but. Doesn't include every program or everything that. I would say pictures say a thousand words and be in their faces and stuff.
I, I have the, uh, I guess the opportunity to serve as a judgment, a human agent, and, uh, everybody should do this once, just, I tell you, the kids tell it the way it is, and it's, it's just, just make my heart feel good, you know? And I always remember that kid, and I think, well, you were me, what would you give? What kind of a record would you get? He said, if you give me anything more red, it'd be a gift. They, they just tell it the way it is, and I love that. It's a real joy. Thank you, Cody.
All right, let's move on to the Veteran Service Office Report. All right, one on here.
Good morning, commissioners. I am taking the report, the current status of Veteran Service Office, uh, right now, we have one hundred and thirty-five open claims with six, fifty-six pending action and three hundred and twenty completed for the year. Uh, Hamlin County has twenty-two open claims with twelve pending action and twelve completed for the year. And as I've stated, past, and I'll just put it out again, um, we're currently telling veterans from other counties that they need to go back to their counties. Not being received real well in some counties, in some locations, uh, but it does need to happen for those counties, and unfortunately, Eric has not been able to get fully qualified due to the government shutdown. That, I didn't think it would affect us, but it has. We keep telling veterans that come in, uh, oh, are you gonna get pages? Hey, we're not federal employees, we're county employees, we're good. Uh, but we do work with federal counterparts, and it is impacting us, so because he's not fully up and operational, it affects the, the ability to process claims. So, we're asking those veterans to reach into their counties when they have Veteran Service Officers. So, it's working. Um, hopefully, when he's qualified, maybe we can open up the door a little bit more, people that come down to Watertown. So, I'll get back to this, uh, we're, this last month, we, uh, veterans have received twenty-one thousand seventeen dollars in the past increase over this last month, bringing that total for the year to one hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. And retro compensation for when they put in claims this last month, it went up two hundred and ninety thousand three hundred, thirty-nine dollars. And the total for the year is one million four hundred and eighty-nine thousand four hundred and five dollars. So I compared this to, back in September, I compared this to Davidson County, and we're right, we're right there. We're working at the same pace as Davidson County, which is pretty good. They have a lot, a very high veteran population down there as well. So, um, we're comparable as far as what our claims are, how we're servicing the veterans within the county. Um, our D A D, or V, the vehicle that we bring trips down to the D A, your healthcare appointments, our veterans, we're getting about two to five trips a month. And we've got five third drivers with the possibility of maybe losing one, or somebody goes on vacations here coming up for the winter months, so it, it all works out well. Um, let's see, um, that, on Veterans Day, the Veteran of the Year will be announced, and, uh, that was voted on this last month, and it'll be announced on Veterans Day at the, at the program at the Watertown High School Arena. Work study.
What, why, I mean, why would change?
I don't know why it would change.
The owners of the high school.
Yeah, back to the high school from the extension center. I have no idea. Haven't heard that.
We should ask Norty if she has any in- insight, but she left her.
She left.
Yeah, I know, that's.
I'll ask tonight. We have a, a council meeting with the Veterans.
Or, or whenever it's been out, the extension center.
Right.
And they, you know, that's gonna seem strange, but it'd be in the arena.
It'll be in the arena. It'll be in the.
So, is there a school that day? Because I think that was an opportunity one year, if there is school, that the students will attend that as well. I remember they had it there one time, and then the students were there. So, that was kind of a nice, nice thing for them.
Anybody with school-age kids? Their school, I mean.
So, an update on our work study that we had last year, Julia Larson, she has decided not to come back.
Oh.
She was gonna pursue another, uh, temporary tour of duty overseas while working on her master's, she can think of this administration, so. Yeah, that, very good. Our future here, we have, um, like I stated already, we have the Cottonton, Cottonton County Commanders meeting tonight at the D A D, and then this week on Thursday, we'll, I'll be on the radio, both at K W A T and K X L D. And then my next note is to request some travel on Thursday, this week. Uh, been brought to my attention, the D A wants me to bring down my pit card and get an update done to it. And it's kind of short notice and very unexpected. I don't understand what a pit, a pit card would be. So, it's like getting a cat card, you know, okay, it doesn't make sense to me. But I'm gonna go through with it, because they're the ones with the authority to see their system share, so. But that'll be this Thursday, on the sixth. I'll run down there, they plug it in, they have me do a ten reset to it. I try it on my computer and I run back very quick, got different softwares, different systems. No real information, just you need to come down for a, a quick update. Um, so, we'll have that done. And then on November twentieth, we have a legis- legislative roundtable that will be held out through American Legion, so Eric and I will attend that. That'll, that'll start at, uh, noon or eleven o'clock, excuse me. When we talk to you about Eric's situation regarding government shutdown. Um, he was a little bit, uh, delayed because of this fire employment with Department of Energy. And then with that cleared, and then, okay, we can get going, and then the government shutdown happened like right after that. So he really didn't get much.
Yeah, but, I mean, I'll, I'll take after you to挪 again.
That's really on the D A, uh, how quickly they want to move forward with it. He, he's accomplished all the, the other requirements. He's, he can prep claims. He's, he meets with veterans and preps a claim, and then he tells me, hey, I've got it ready, that's ready to be submitted to the D A. So then I get in and I review it, and we work through different situations that might be at hand due to his
Yeah.
knowledge base, let me say. I trained him up a little bit more, and we move forward, I get claims submitted, but it does help that he's able to process that way. He just can't fully see everything, can't follow the claims when he started to finish. So. And then on the eighth of November, uh, we have the Military and Veterans Appreciation Event at Joy Ranch. That'll start at ten thirty, go to one thirty, and, uh, they'll have a lunch in, I'll tell you, for the veterans when they depend. And that's it for the month. Any questions?
So I just looked it up, and then you answered the question previously, uh, yes, they do have school on Veterans Day.
That's probably the reason why they brought it back. So, yeah, that's a good thing.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, wait, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item number nine. This is discussion possible action to authorize the chair to assign the Helpline Center to Cottonton. We have that in your folder. It is an eleven-page document.
Good morning. It, this is every rule of the contract we've had for the last, um, sort of three years. There's the Helpline Center. This is our charting system. They did, uh, add on, and because it'd be, which is the transition to the correct government, our staff has been trained in, and so it's just incorporating or it's just adding that easy. Well, this isn't the, we already have paid the cost. This is just a memorandum of understanding, and the cost actually, like, currently is coming out of our post-up grant. Um, because we're using the system for post-up, there are towns, we're able to build the cost double, you know, to the critical.
But there's no cost.
No, no, this is just that we agreed to there.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve by McElhany.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schwir. Hard to say. Any discussion?
Yes, I, I do, let's check. I, I looked through this. I actually looked through it fairly thorough, and I, I, I for some reason, I'll be all right. I'll, I'll get it out here sooner later. It seemed like there's, uh, repetition. Would you, what, what are the, what are we doing that? What are we going to do? You, you understand what I'm saying? Are we overlapping in services? There's so many services and so many options and programs out there in, in this area that I just, my head just swimming, you know, is there overlap?
So this is actually for the computer system that we're using that's provided by the Helpline Center. So they don't provide any services here in Watertown, other than this computer system. There are, we currently use it. Um, brothers and sisters behind bars use it, and so the intention when we first got it was that we would have partner agencies that would also be on the Network of Care. Um, those partner agencies haven't found it useful because they have their own trading systems. And so this really just gives, so you don't have a lot of other partner agencies in Watertown that are on it. However, there's many in Sioux Falls that are on it, and it's actually very helpful to see when people have been served in Sioux Falls, we're able to to see what services people have received in Sioux Falls. So this isn't necessarily a service that they're providing. This is the software system that we use to track our client uh, contact. And so the report that you get every month is from Network of Care.
But you understand what my, what I was saying. It just seemed like, it's been done, like, there's overlap and and, uh, it looked to me like, you said Sioux Falls is the one that's usually, um, gaining from the program.
Well, this isn't a program. Yeah, it's a software, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we wouldn't, before we had this system, we were using an Excel spreadsheet to track clients. And so now that we have this, we can have, have a pretty robust charting system. So that's, so it, it's really just a charting system. It's not a program. Yeah.
Well, you know, I, we've had it for some years, and that's what, two or three years now, I believe. And that, and it's, uh, but I, I just see things like that, and is it trying to use up the federal grants? You know, and, uh, I know that it's a federal grant that's, uh, funding, but, and, uh, that, that bothers me a little bit, you know, especially in this mannequin.
Well, if, if we didn't have this contact with them, we would be back to the Excel spreadsheet tracking clients, and, and that was really inefficient. Really inefficient. This allows us to go back and see how frequently clients come in, that we're able to do a lot of data and draw from them.
So, so this is all, this is basically all your point, that this is.
Yeah, this is our point of data. Yeah, and their ability to provide that for us for minimal cost to the county for it. Um, when we had priced it, it was gonna be twenty to thirty thousand dollars to develop a software system, terrible. And we have it for, um, a few thousand dollars. This was also, so, like, within the county too, our, our county offices, people can go there for information as well. You know, for, you know, if they're looking for something, they can go to the Helpline Center. We'll tell them where to find food, where to find, you know, your county offices, what they provide. So this is also a helpful information place for individuals.
Yeah, it's a good place.
Okay, without being said anymore, uh, well, seek a motion to approve. Oh, do we? Do we have a motion in a second? So, who made the motion? Okay, that's right.
Commissioner.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion carries. I thought we were looking for the horse. All right. Action to approve the renewal of county liquor license applications. We'll start with the first one. And we can take these all in one motion.
Yeah.
So, hold on, just a second. So we have Country Road Barn, Dakota Sioux Casino, Joy Ranch of South Dakota, the Rooster Sports Bar and South Fork Lounge. I don't think we need to take another visual, unless there's a problem with one of them. So, go ahead.
No, um, I talked to the sheriff, everything is good with all of them. I might just explain, this is, um, they'll begin January one, twenty twenty-sixth. Their class A, their on-sale liquor and Sunday liquor, they're located near a class one municipality. System Wapit and Sioux Tribe, D B A Sioux, uh, Dakota Sioux Casino, Robert and Brenda Baxter, D B A Country Road Barn, LLC. Data Budhorn, D B A The Rooster Barn, and W J Schlitt Enterprise, D B A South Fork Lounge. And then on off-sale wine and cider is System Wapit and Sioux Tribe, D B A Dakota Sioux Casino, and Joy Ranch of South Dakota.
Looking for a motion. Motion by Watson, second by McElhany. Any discussion? Any concerns with any of those? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item number eleven. This is update on previously approved U S imaging project for the Register of Deeds Office. Good morning.
Morning, Dan.
Good morning.
It's a big one.
Yeah, it is a big one. Um, can I say, Frank, we have given you the minutes from a previous meeting? It's had some background, you know, remember, having that Randy. In twenty twenty, we started this project with U S imaging, and they came in and camped out in the basement and and all our images from our books. Um, they took microfilm off-site, image that, sent the microphone back to us. So, within that process, there's several different phases. So within that process, there's several different phases. And attached to that MOU, you can see the invoice that they're given now. Back when we started this project. I had been saving up the money on the M and P fund, which is our modernization preservation. That we um. Through legislation, register deeds collect. Part of our recording fees goes into this fund. So I've been saving up dollars to take on a project like this. Um. At that time, I was facing what I was doing within the project off the amount of money that I had on the fund. True, I mean, there's been complications with it. It is, it is a complicated project. Just based on. How we. Put documents into our system with document numbers and books and pages and. Starting from the beginning of time and how it was done. Through the years for them to try and match their images with our indexing and so it gets really complicated. So we're also working with our software company to get all of that stuff in to the system. So at that time, I had checked off through the stages and the phases what we could afford at that time. Well, this project's extended over five years now. We have had through the years. They have given us drives with certain stages. So we're able to plug that into a computer and have those images. So it's been very helpful through the five years. We have had some documents that we've been able to. To pull and make copies of and so that's been helpful. So. Now looking at it, we have done an upload with our software system. And that fee I had paid back in March was a twenty five hundred dollar fee to do a bulk upload into our system. Well, so once we got that, my staff. Went through these documents trying to make sure, you know, that we have anything and stuff matching up. We were coming up with. You know, errors. Where is this? This doesn't make sense. So we finally had a um. Group meeting with Tyler Technologies, our software company, US Energy and Us. And decided, yeah, there was some gaps in here. The way that they transferred the information to the software company. Wasn't matching up, so we're gonna have to do another upload. So with emails back and forth, I'm like, you know, you're trying to get this person called, you know, so everything takes on. But so in order for the project to go forward, I needed to sign another invoice for twenty four hundred dollars. So I'm agree with that. So what is no fault of ours, that the first one didn't work, we shouldn't have to be paying the second one. The US Energy has agreed. To pay back, to take that fee. The way that it's set up, the company can't bill them because I'm their vendor, but it has to come to me. So what they came up with, I gave you that MOU. I had paid for this first stage back in. As you guys said, like they said, approved the whole project way back when, whatever that date was. Yeah, so back in twenty twenty three, I had paid for the first stage of the project. I refused to pay anything until we get a product. So what they came up with, you know, I'm like, well, what do we get out of this for this project taking five years? So the stages that at that time. I could not afford. We didn't have the money in the funds. What they've come up with, they will honor the prices. From back then. Because obviously everything's gone up. For me going forward with the rest of the project. So when she came up, I mean, it's a savings of. Roughly around thirty thousand dollars. So with the MOU, basically what that's doing. By me agreeing to pay that invoice that you have attached. You can see at the, on the second page, that twenty four hundred being minus off of there. So this is gonna pay for the rest of the project for what I originally checked off for the phases.
So this is all.
Yeah, it was approved back in twenty twenty.
So this is all always an issue with them that we.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And each year I am budgeting out of that M and P fund, basically to spend that money. In case, you know, we get this finalized. So basically what they're wanting me to agree by signing this, that I will pay this invoice. In a timely manner and if I do, then the twenty four hundred comes back. Not paid, then I'm agreeing not to do that. So basically what I'm hearing today is. You know, you've already approved the project. I find giving you an update. Where at and how things are.
So you. Was that Jake with question? You say you saved up. This is budget.
It's not. It's a separate fund for the rest of their deeds. Yeah. So.
Got it. Clicking, clicking these, it's just a case of these, you're clicking.
Yes, for every recording, a recording is thirty dollars. Five dollars a nap. Three dollars stays with the county. Right away. Two dollars each month gets sent to the state. So at the end of our year, the money that's been sent into the state gets divided amongst the counties and comes back to us. So we, you know, started this to kind of help the smaller counties be able to afford to do different things. And so, you know, it's based on a legislation. We can spend it on specific items, you know, we can spend it on training, we can spend it on. Updating things in our office, projects like this. And like I said, I was, I. Stuck title that. And I had found the other day, I think as of last month. So there's like a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars in.
You had the money.
Yeah.
That's all right. I told you two numbers up with. This costing the two, the two things, the two wrong, which you paid in my friend, my seller. I told. Twenty three. Less than.
Well, it was like twenty eight thousand. Because the thing of it is, once they got into the project. You know, if they saw the beginning when they're, they're looking at each book has X amount of pages. You're gonna have to image this much. Once they got in there, we're imaging some of this stuff. Prices had dropped down because we didn't have that many. You know, they kind of estimated it's gonna be this much. Paying back, it wasn't. But like I said, it's. It is a complicated project.
So if this, uh, when, when some steps are, is it searchable? What is it?
Yes, it will all be in our software and searchable by book and page. Yeah. Cause now, like I said, during the five years, we've had drives plugged into our computers that, for instance. The original plaques for the county. They folded them up, they're in envelopes, they're in drawers. So we created an index with book and page envelope numbers. Surveyor comes in, needs copy of a plaque, they can look at the envelope number, go to that drive, pull it up. But now, once it's all in there, the survey is gonna be on gold computer, put the book and page in. So.
And. An online accessibility for them offsite or are they gonna have to come in-house and?
As far as I'm concerned, I will not be putting documents online. I just think. My personal opinion, when you look at the fraud. With deeds and and the talk of that so much more. I just feel that.
That would be my concern too. There's a will, there's a way.
And I'm really hoping, and I know right now the software company that we're with, there are some counties within that they have on there. You know, with them that do have documents online. So they come up with a product for those counties. For the alert system, basically when something's recorded with your name on it. These people are gonna give an email or a text, whatever they sign up for, that something's been recorded against your name on your property. Um, at this time, it's just geared towards the counties that have documents online.
So we have a motion by Gable, second by McElhany. Any further discussion?
Okay. Explain this, just so we know what we're voting on. What is the, what's the fellow that motion up? Are we?
Paying bill.
No.
Yeah, because once they. Continue with the rest of the project.
Yeah, and we, I guess, looking at the agenda here, it's just an update. We don't. So we don't need to take out. It's just an update, so thank you.
So basically, I mean, yeah, you approved it in twenty twenty. So money is always gonna be there.
Make any move. All right, number twelve, action to authorize the auditor's office to process necessary claims for payment on November twelfth, twenty twenty five. I moved to prove that in motion by Johnson, second by McElhany. All in favor say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. We will note office closures on Tuesday, November eleventh. That was Veterans Day. Because of that, we will not be meeting as a commission on that day either, so you will have that week off next week. All right. Is there anything? Number fourteen is no change of date for the DART tournament at the Cottonton County Extensionary Complex. That date has been December twelfth and thirteen. And that was the shooters event thing. Came in front of us about the liquor licenses. Oh, some change. Uh, number fifteen is action to approve payment applications. Claims for payment.
Yes, we have a few of those. We have them in your package as well. Um, I'll take them in separate motions if I could. The first. Um, First District Association of Local Governments, an amount of six hundred seventy thousand thirty cents. And then to Water Systems, an amount of eight oh seven forty for a total of one thousand four seventy seven seventy. And that is um, so that we can apply them for that grant reimbursement.
Motion to approve.
Motion by McElhany. Second by Schwir. Any discussions? Commissioner Schwir, sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
And motion carries. Thank you. Number seventeen is actually approved the automatic budget supplement thing after the state's attorney's office.
We still have those other claims. For the jail. So we have two for the new jail. Uh, one is Detegra, an amount of forty thousand six hundred eighty eight dollars and the other one is in one million, one forty eight, two hundred eighty. Dollar and eighty six. Uh, that's for the new jail project. So yeah, if I can get them in separate motions, I can keep that all separate.
Motion to approve.
Motion by McElhany, second by Commissioner Gable. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose. My motion carries.
Yep.
Okay. Move on to the item number seventeen, uh, automatic budget supplement, state's attorney's office for the JGRI funds. An amount of two hundred nineteen thousand dollars. We talked about that earlier. Yeah, we proved it, yeah.
We approved the allocation of the funds for my budget that I've not yet.
Motion by Johnson, second by McElhany. It's a lot going on here today. Any further discussion?
It's complicated. Oh, wow.
All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. There you go. Now you're good again. All right, we're gonna back up and uh, Mr. Chris Clifton, who is the executive director of the Watertown Development Company is here with us. And uh. We're happy to see him here this morning and he's gonna give us a presentation. On the WBC's annual report, something this came out with.
On our liquor application for Calvin.
Yeah.
Looks like the state is preliminary, preliminarily going to. Um, grant us four hundred thousand of the, and then it's west of five hundred. On which I haven't done math, but I'm pretty sure that that will induce. All our partners.
Pressures, you'll remember that that is part of that legislation project that we partnered with the utilities, the development company and the city of Watertown on. So that's good news.
Yeah, that's true. I think our original. Activations were each apartment you get, like, come up with about a hundred and twenty one. That was the assumption, though, with money, if we give the money. Uh, it's supposed to be confirmed by the board. Their chat is pretty big. Take that. Burn down the promiscuous one with forty five or fifty thousand.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Or four million dollar association.
Well, let's hope it goes well. Can you turn your mic on there? Can you just identify yourself and?
Chris Clifton, longtime developer. Well, thank you all for seeing me. Want to give you a copy of the annual report. I know we'd be invited each of you to, uh, our annual meeting, which is helping each other. I would. Love for you to come next year to, not only you, the investors, the public, but uh. To enjoy some opportunity to talk about economics and how we're trying to live the. The tax value. That's the bottom line is when you get people to go to work and. Companies like Craylon and Terrence and others providing that little insurance card, so it uses our. Our energy care side hospital as well as provides those uh, out of out of town funds that come in, you know, payroll, which you. That's what was stimulating the company. Um. If, you know, we're at an interesting crossroads. It's the oldest economic development organization in the state. Um, if you look back, somebody in these seats with me along with myself. Forty years ago, we're making decisions on purchasing property to buy the airport, developed the airport, that purchased property. Were five years ago on Pheasant Ridge. And then five years ago, we purchased the property at uh. Uh, at cabinet industrial. We're still eight months away from sewer to county, so really in fact, we've been working and developing. Talent for almost five years. So as you can see, it takes a long time, a lot of effort to get us from reporting and saying, let's go find the votes. Back to the beginning. Why we do this? Normally, this will be a private sector. Some entrepreneur would say, there's an opportunity here for me to go buy land. Put a road again, put water in sewer in, just like. We built houses, we said, then we do industrial. In case of size of this marketplace, it's not. There's not enough return on investment. You think about Pheasant Ridge alone, just take twenty five years. Uh, the community spent about two million dollars to buy the land. Put the road in, put the water and sewer in, in anticipation of. Dakota Sioux. The other companies that are there today, and that park alone employs about fourteen hundred people. They're worth about ten and a half million dollars. The reason we do what we do is to give private sector has the stuff to do, but there's too much risk and I'm not. So communities on the tertiary level side, by law, they're kind of, we have to find a way to do it. In anticipation, if you wanna grow that component of the marketplace. Some people choose not to, some don't even have the utility resources here. So you're really. Exacerbates, they're baiting your opportunities to grow the utilities and the infrastructure of the guy because, you know, there's a meter set out there. Lots of those utility drugs, you know, water and city spends money in sewer and there's sewer treatment, the soil has to be paid for, so. In the long run, it's kind of a collective, you know, we're all in this together, let's make it happen. If you were to take us out and say, well, let's just dissolve Watertown, the local corporation, and just not do it. Um, would the private sector show up? I would argue and say it's been seen as in the last fifty years, they would. Have we had other development outside of Watertown, corporations, driving industries, yes, but it's been pretty thin. Um, and I can say just from a land development standpoint. The land, the land that we developed and sold for example, South Fork to. Uh, to that company here last fall, from the day I got the first phone call. From the owner. To the day they broke ground in sixty two days. From start to finish, a million dollar transaction with the company spending. Close to four million dollars and now can be close to fifteen million dollars on payroll there. Six months ago, well, yeah. Um, the site they bought from, they paid about forty thousand dollars a neighbor for. Show ready, all the utilities, that same site, if we went out to twelve. Show already, all the utilities, that same site, if you went out to twelve. Say, least of case. There's a twenty acre site that has just recently been purchased, hadn't been announced till another county. They can use five times per acre, what, for that site, and the site is not entitled. Has been annexed to the city and still has ever, so. And they're paying almost a hundred fifty thousand dollars a day for that site. So that kind of gives you the idea of pathway to a company like Dakota two, or Dakota Body, or Crown, or somebody, that says, hey, let's expand in Watertown. And so, we're not maybe any, W B C doesn't exist, they're that. They'll find a site like ten twelve, and then they'll be another, and we'll pay five times. Or, and they're still not gonna be, they're able to build on that site until sometime summer or fall, and shoot. Speed of market in this industry is. Because there are places like Mitchell, and you know, they'll sell you two tomorrow, buy a site, sixty two days, and start working. So there is some irony to it, uh, it doesn't cost the taxpayers much, well, I think from the annual report, you'll see. I think every year that we measured it since Watertown one point oh, which is about nine years ago. The returns been at least three to one, sometimes five to six, on the tax dollars. And remember, W B C is half funded by taxpayers and half by private sector. That's an important point, half the money we spend, it's tax dollars, half of it is committed by private sector, that's fair. So you truly had brought the public tide and circuit together to do the things that northern would not have taken place in the economy. Under the law. So with that, I want to tell you that, you know, we're, we're trying to use as good students we can, we're trying to make this dollar stretch as far as we can, we are looking at the future. You know, we've just about, we have one, twenty eight percent of that in Pheasant Ridge. Airports are in full, finished, and we'll hardly do it there. Um, Calvin's gonna give us fifty four acres, we back back steal all the time up into twenty acre site for future development, I don't know, you're so. Yeah, and Century, which was originally thirty dollars and five million dollars, is now, you know, they bought the site, they own the property. Over ten million dollars investment, I've got hundreds of employees. You see that playing out in Calvin, but that's maybe one of two of the deals. For us to go from twenty two thousand population to one ten hundred population in Cali. To go to a three to four percent growth, we're standing in the last twenty years, we've grown that one percent. So if you're to double or triple that, we need nine more campuses. Tonight does not forget. First question, first question is, where do they go? So we're, we have embarked upon what we think is the next phase of looking down the road to say, you know, where's the next two hundred, fifty, three hundred? It took us five years to get to Calvin and sixty acres, and we're still eighteen months away from sewer. Can you imagine what a two hundred meter site would look like, that we could secure with an object a day and then do. Two, three, four, one thousand dollars of the design engineering necessary before we even close bathing. Uh, so that's the role that I think W B C plays as far as our sweet spot. Do you, are we involved in channel catering, housing, and for, yes, we are involved in all of this, because it's important to. Attracting and retaining companies we have, but the bottom line is, we're trying to solve the need that we'd be talking about. And with that, I will appreciate the firmship that we've forged in Calvin, I think it's gonna go all the way for the future. Um, again, we'd love to have you at the annual meeting next year, and anytime any of y'all have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. Um, this will be your show. Maybe that's, thank you, anybody have any questions?
The, uh, the panel, if you have. I, I appreciated that, uh, because all those guys we see in the street every day, you know, I. The, the one thought that I had during that panel, you know, I wish that more people would. Know what Watertown Development Company does, you know, the concept of not in my backyard. Uh, that frustrates me, and uh, it's, it's one of the milestones that just. Broke lots of a lot of developments and a lot of things that could be happening, and uh. Just in my years that I've been in Watertown, we shot ourselves in the foot several times, you know, and uh. And I know people are concerned about safety and all the other issues, but you know, we have, um. We don't, we don't go forward with a lot of these projects about those thoughts in mind, safety is number one. You know, and, and I wish just more people would understand that. You know, we're not cheap on the hip, it's well thought, and.
That is a great point, you know, it, being in the private sector and public sector, state development, I think, for years in southern states. From Montana all the way to New Orleans. The number one obstacle to making the deal happens always in wilderness, so, and rural state. That's the number one whole, there are a lot of projects that develop. I can tell you stories after story, major projects, minor projects, that is, this is where we're gonna be. People love the state, they love the tax, and why they believe employees, this is gonna be the right place. And they go to do a site search, and then they run into the pavement. You're gonna have five hundred trucks a year that have come to that site, or. You're gonna have a hundred fifty cars a day coming, they'll work the way, and I, they're two miles away, and. You know, I mean, South Dakota's a wonderful state, and we all wanna live out in the. The prairie, not be impacted by what's going on on the homeless, in effect, you either change and adapt or die. There's no communities in the state or any other state that just maintain. You're doing this, or you're doing that, and it's finding those hurdles, you're finding a way to get over them. You don't wanna cram a project down some road that has. You have problems with cattle or farming or something that purely because of some environmental issue, we don't deal with. When the companies come to us and say, well, we're gonna put a, a smelter in, and we're gonna pet air pollution, it's gonna be ten times what you got in Dakota. That, that, Dakota two now, we're gonna give an issue, Dakota two, one, when they get to us, we go, wait a minute, is this really a place for speed? And we ask those tough questions, I mean, we are at the front door trying to represent. You all as elected officials, because you can't lift a table for every part of that. So that's a tremendous amount of responsibility amongst us, to give us that kind of guidance, we need to be connected, I think, and talk about what's. You know, somebody said something the other day about, well, the dual county data center's gonna do this or the other, and I said, well, the dual county has to deal with that. Well, what are you gonna do, Chris, about, I said, what I'm gonna do is try to find as many people that go to work there to come live here. That's where I'm getting this, I'm like, can we do a data center, like a ten or twenty man project? No, we don't have the transmission lines off, what? To get that kind of power, and dual county to do, because they, on nature, have made their decisions over years, having natural gas line. Texas Gas Transmission, crossing a major hundred fifteen K B on them, that's already in place, it's just the natural occurrence. Because of what the compound, and that's why they had to build it, it's not because Watertown was one of them, people also be one of them. It's because of the natural environment, it's fair, will there be some people in dual county that'll be having the technical plant, because, yes, it's changed.
And now five cars will drive by my place every day, I actually have a neighbor telling me that. Now, if this goes through, my own land, five cars driving by my place every day.
You know, I think the, the attitude shifts has, has uh, changed the. The perspective on how we view economic development in our region, at least in the last fifteen, twenty years. That I've been really paying attention to it. And I think the development company does a fine job of driving that, and uh, so I want to thank you for bringing us to the table. On behalf of the county, and not speaking for everybody else up here, but I know that we wanna see this area continuing to grow, and. I know thirty thousand people is now aligned, and manager said that, and we wanna see that grow too, because that ultimately impacts. The county, right, so, so, even though it's the Watertown Development Company, it's actually regional development. Uh, for our county as well, so we appreciate everything you do, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And let's keep that forward thinking momentum going, so we continue to develop and. Cause we have a lot of big people, we've got a lot of people that are movers and shakers, and they want these projects to continue, and that's just a win-win for us. And we appreciate them as well. Commissioner Gable, did you have something? I thought you had.
No, just, yeah, this one, is this on PDF, Chris?
Yes.
I can't find it on the website.
I had posted, yeah, did you need something?
Okay.
I had it all sent out, each one of you.
Yes, there is here.
Sure.
Right, thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
Um, let's, we want item number eighteen, this is action to approve personnel changes.
Yes, we have two of those. Um, both individuals, so that was Carbon Schilling. He is a new hire in uh, full-time correctional officer. Step one, grade thirty five, rate of pay is twenty five eighty an hour, four thousand forty nine twenty a month, and uh. Effective date was November first, twenty twenty five, the second one is Ryan Webb, also full-time correctional officer. Grade thirty five, step one, rate of, um, twenty five eighty an hour, four thousand forty nine twenty a month. And um, effective date of November fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
Take both of those in one motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by McElhenney, second by Gable, discussion, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Travel requests, we have one, I think.
Yeah, maybe we serve a staff traveling to a, using public policy for local development.
There's a budget in that, motion by Johnson, second by Commissioner Schwier. Discussion, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Commissioners, public notices, a possible form of commissioners could be in attendance at the weekend day dinner is coming up on Friday, November seventh, that's this Friday. Can be held at Second Street Station, starts at five thirty, with the social, six thirty dinner. Also, the Sioux Valley Commissioners Association meeting on November twelfth, at twelve noon, that is in Madison. And the farm business banquet, November twentieth, at the Watertown Event Center at six P hours. Please propose on your calendar, and if there's a chance, there will be a quorum at all three of those events, anybody have anything else?
Uh, you mentioned earlier, uh, before the meeting, the Make-A-Wish event coming up, um, would be a chance.
Yeah, Make-A-Wish, uh, is on Friday night.
It's Friday.
This Friday.
I don't know, I, the, the aid, there that, uh. Oh, but our dry ranch for veterans, that could possibly be, uh, there.
Anything else? If not, uh, anything for old business issues? Anything for new business? No updates on the Gable? Um. Anything for the open, public comments? What comments for the open, Commissioner Owens?
There, this could, I'm, I'm all this, and this is a, jail, clear as the needy to the decision, yeah, this, this moving along. So, it's still mostly a foundation work.
Thank you for the invite to that, that was so good, I'd like to be a card load when it's happening, very important means.
So it's a big, well, for branches, every, it's, where's my, yeah, on our, our kit, probably, that's, just to go through the project, and you know, with all the things. You know, if you have some questions, so, and stuff like this.
Right, we do have a need to go into executive session, we're since South could have qualified law one dash twenty five dash twenty two, and this would be for the purpose of. Contracts, and we also have a need for personnel, I believe, rendered requested that as well, so. Take a motion to go into exec.
So.
By Commissioner Schwier, seconded by Commissioner Gable. Discussion, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you, we will go into.